We still have to punch in?
Yes, you do need to turn the on button.
This one doesn't turn green. This one doesn't do any sort of green light. It doesn't do it.
Oh.
Those ones are on all the time.
These are on all the time? Okay. Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The June 28 study session of the City of Palm Springs Planning Commission is hereby called to order. I don't have a -- but get that. Maybe have the roll call, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Donenfeld.
Present.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Present.
Commissioner Hudson.
Present.
Commissioner Lowe.
Present.
Commissioner Middleton.
Present.
Vice Chair Wermuth.
Present.
And Chair Calerdyne.
Present. All right. Okay. The -- this is the time for public comment. If you have any -- if you wish to speak to the commission on any item before -- under the jurisdiction of the commission, now is the time to do so. We may also take public comment after the discussion of the single item on the agenda, so -- but if you have something you wish to say to the planning commission, now would be the time to do it. There is a limit of three minutes. I see one person shaking their head, and I think that's all the only thing we have, so that's -- no public comment. The discussion item on the review and discussion of the proposed park design for the Serena Park development located to the northeast corner of North Whitewater Club Drive and East Verona Road, case number 5.1327 PD 3-66. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, let me just give you a little bit of background on the project and then what we are doing here today in terms of the park plan. As you're aware, you all reviewed the Serena Park development back in spring of 2016 and recommended approval of the preliminary plan development and the development agreement to the city council. The preliminary plan development and associated applications went forward to the city council. The city council approved the preliminary in September of 2016. However, they did not approve the development agreement at that point in time because we were not quite ready in terms of some of the terms of the development agreement to move forward with that. As you'll recall, the development requires access from Golden Sands, which is adjacent to the Four Seasons development at the northwest area -- excuse me, yeah, northwest area of the site. That was recently approved by the Four Seasons Homeowners Association back in March -- March of this year. That was one of the critical components that needed to be approved before we could move forward with the development agreement. So that's where we are today in terms of the approval process. We still need to have the development agreement approved by city council, and then if the project moves forward, we would still need to go through the final plan development approval process for the specific aspects of the development. In terms of the park itself, as you'll recall from the initial plan that was reviewed by the planning commission and approved by the city council, there is an area at the southeast corner of the site that was set aside for a public park. There are two conditions relative to that in the final conditions of approval, and I've listed those there in the memo that I have before you. It says that the park shall be provided in accordance with the approved site plan, properly maintained by the HOA, and accessible to the general public. In terms of the public benefit, it was also identified that the park was a public benefit, and it needed to be accessible to the public. In terms of the development agreement, one of the things that we need to do is we need to identify the amenities that are provided in the park and then also a timeframe for development of the park. And so that's really the reason why we are here today, looking at the park plan, is to specify the amenities for the park. Keep in mind that these amenities will be specified in the development agreement, and it's against that that we will review the final plans for the park. The final plans, in terms of the final landscaping plan for the park, the details on fencing, et cetera, would be reviewed as part of the final plan development process. So again, this is to establish the amenities that are required in the park. The final design details are something that would come back to you as part of the final plan development process. As you can see from the site plan, there's a number of amenities that are proposed. The park is actually split into two sides. There is a portion on the east side of what I'm calling the central spine road through the development, and then there's a portion, a smaller portion, on the west side of the spine road. The west side will have two tennis courts. On the east side, you'll see a putting green, passive recreation park, and then also a dog park, as well as restrooms. I'd like to have the applicant actually go through the specifics of the site plan and walk us through the details of the park design and what they're anticipating, but I just wanted to give you a brief overview of what was anticipated for the park. With that, I will conclude my comments. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to take those now, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant to give you a presentation on the park itself.
Mr. Donenfeld?
Flynn and I just have a couple of questions. One is, with respect to the development agreement, is that something that the planning commission, as part of the process, will also be reviewing and making recommendations to council?
You have already done that. As part of your April 27 meeting in 2016.
Right.
You reviewed the terms of the development agreement and made recommendations to city council, and we're in the process of incorporating those recommendations, including those in the discussion at city council.
So it doesn't come back to us?
No, it doesn't need to come back to you.
My second question is, with respect to the CV link route, and this is really with respect to the entire project, to what extent is that route going to be made safe and secure for the residents who are surrounding it? Because it's obviously a public thoroughfare in a way.
Mm-hmm.
It's a right of way. I assume the city will have -- or CV link or the authority running CV link will have a right of way or an easement with respect to this property. What are the plans for securing the route with respect to places where it actually goes through private property?
In this particular instance, what will be important is looking at the design of the project. There are principles called crime prevention through environmental design, which looks at how you design things and how you can make them safer through design. Things that you look for is natural surveillance, so that people in their residences can look at the trail and observe what's going on on the trail, or people who are in the area, for example, in the park. When you're in the park, you can see the trail, you can see what's going on on the trail. Things such as lighting, how we deal with landscaping, how we deal with fencing, those are all critical components in terms of the design of the trail itself to make it safer. Obviously, another aspect of that would be having regular policing of the trail. I don't know that the city's ready to go into that discussion yet in terms of what additional security in terms of personnel would be required to look at the safety and security of the trail.
So the developer will not be responsible for any of the infrastructure requirements that you've just described?
He will be responsible for the trail route that is shown in the plans, the approved plans, not for the regular CV link route. Keep in mind that the route that goes through the development is identified as an alternate route.
Right.
It will serve as a trail that residents of the development may enjoy. Potentially down the road, it may become an alternate route for CV link. That decision still has not been made yet. The developer will be responsible for constructing that part of the trail as the plan for the development, but again, in terms of personnel or things like that, that would be a city issue to address.
Thank you.
Any further question? Michael?
I know it's not part of what the discussion is today, but since Commissioner Donenfeld brought it up, the CV link trail that's portrayed in the drawings, is that meant to be open to the public, and will it be open to the public prior to the CV link being constructed in that area?
I don't have a timeframe for when CV link is going to be constructed yet. This would be installed as part of the development, what I'm calling the alternate CV link route, and that would be available to residents of the development, and because this is a non-gated development, it would also be available to members of the public.
Okay. So I do have another question. In terms of our work here this morning, what are you -- do we do a recommendation? Do we approve something? Do we just look at it?
You are doing a recommendation, so that is what I'm expecting from the planning commission today. So I'll be taking your comments and then a recommendation, but it does not require a formal vote.
Okay.
Kathy?
Yeah. Has this gone through -- because it's a public park maintained by the HOA, has it gone through Parks and Rec?
No, it has not gone through Parks and Rec yet. Because this will be developed and maintained by the HOA, it doesn't necessarily need to go through the Parks and Recreation Board. We had already had a discussion with the Parks and Recreation Board about this park.
Oh, I do remember.
And they did not want to take it on.
Right.
Michael, did you have an additional comment?
Yeah, but I forgot what it was. I'm sorry.
Anyone else? Randy?
Yeah. Would the HOAs that are basically surrounded by this notify about this meeting?
We notified the neighborhood organizations that are surrounding this project, yes. It is not a public hearing.
There is a new neighborhood organization, and I actually got an email from the person who's the president of it. I would have read it here, except that I just poured water in my phone, but I did send it to Flynn, and I don't know if he has it. But they did have comment.
Perhaps if you could give me a moment, maybe while the developer makes his presentation, and then I could read it into the record later.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, I've got a couple. Flynn, do we have any identified needs that the city has identified in park space that we would want to maybe utilize this for?
This was a discussion that we had had with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and as you might recall, we also have this discussion at planning commission as well. The general plan does identify the north end of the city as being in need of a park. We already have the just under six acre park that's been dedicated by the Maryland Development to address that need. Part of the discussion with the Parks and Recreation Commission is, would this area serve as a sufficient area for a park? They had concerns in terms of its accessibility and also its size, that it wasn't adequate. So while it will be a benefit to those in the immediate area, in terms of the general plan, the park that Maryland is dedicating will serve the needs of the city better.
Okay. We don't -- there's not a particular need for additional soccer or baseball type fields in this area?
Yeah, eventually there will be, and that was one of the things that we looked at for this initially in this area, but again, just based on its location and its size, it's inadequate for soccer or baseball.
Okay. Finally, and I know I could have looked this up myself and mapped, but what are the surrounding general plan uses to the east? I think it's residential.
Yes, you do have some residential uses, and then you also have the wash and conservation uses in the wash itself.
So there were -- part of this would be abutting some future residential use there on the kind of the -- at least the eastern boundary that runs due north-south?
Yes, there was a subdivision that has been approved there on that parcel to the east, and so it would be across the levee, or I believe there is some type of a divisor between those two. Maybe -- is it flat, Eric? Okay.
Switch the ring.
Okay, so it would directly abut.
Okay.
It's a good thing we have the applicant here.
Right.
He knows his site.
Okay.
I have some questions on the dog park, but should I hold those until?
Let's maybe -- if we're going to talk about the design, let's wait until the applicant makes his presentation, and then if you would direct your questions to the applicant.
If there's any further questions of staff, let's have the applicant. Eric?
Good morning, everybody. Okay.
Eric, that microphone does come up if it's not tall enough for you.
Turn it on. Okay.
Or, there you go.
All right, so I guess the burden fell on us to come up with at least a first proposal, and that's what this is, and I'd like to kind of walk you through what I did and why I did it and what I'm thinking. And just from a big, general parameter standpoint, I wanted to incorporate some active uses so that the park had a good purpose and incorporate uses based on feedback that I've gotten from talking to people in the community. And that's both by what I put in and what I omitted. Secondly, as a designer looking at this, and I'm looking at how you come into a community and you get a sense of place, and we have this trail feature, we'll call it, the alternative CV link or whatever, coming both from the neighborhood, from the Whitewater Club neighborhood, and from the city at large coming in, and the CV link itself coming in from the levee, how does that work? So I wanted a sense of entrance, so I'm using large plant material. You can see the double row of trees coming along the trail, coming from the Whitewater community on the east side of the entrance road coming in, and using three primary types of trees to come in. The large Washingtonia palms, the Canary Island palms to do two things, to break it up and to give some shade and give some punch to that intersection, so it has some good visual interest, and then the Virginia oaks to give shade and to break it up. But Flynn and I originally talked about that. Flynn did see -- I did give a presentation to staff, so I'll blame Flynn a little bit for this, but I think it's a very good idea to put in the oak trees is to add some more shade to that trail area. And if you're not familiar with that tree, the plaza areas at the Indian Wells Tennis Center that have the DG and you have Go the Shade trees, those are Virginia oaks. That's what it is. It's a very well-adapted tree for this climate and provides shade and can handle the wind. It's a very well-adapted tree for this climate, and provides shade and can handle the wind. So, that's why I did that tree row. So you see a big, big dramatic sweep of the road going in, provide shade and provide a sense of entries. The city lost some tennis courts recently. Um, I had some discussions, I happen to know the operator, I've talked to some of the council members about it. Um, we're in the wind zone, it's probably not the right place for a full-blown tennis center, but there used to be tennis courts here back when it was, when it was a club, and I think there was an opportunity here as that, as an active use, it also fit well in that space, that smaller space. So the idea there, um, was to put a couple of courts and to have a shade area, so an area that you could relax and get out of the sun, and maybe you're waiting for your turn to play. Um, gave us an opportunity to put in some parking there, so I think it's kind of a self-enclosed mini-area. Uh, to me, that seemed to work, and there certainly seems to be a need within, um, the local residents and some of the comments that I received from them for a place to play tennis. Um, the golf, I, that came from very specific comments from the neighbors, primarily in the, in the condo area, um, directly asking me, would you please do something like this? And they actually took me in their cars and drove me around to some of the practice putting areas in the Coachella Valley to say, we would like this. And so that's what that reflects, is direct recommendation and a request from the neighbors. Um, they wanted to, you know, at least remember a little bit when this was a golf course as a place that they could go, and with an HOA maintenance, um, and the area away from homes, so you're putting into a center area, it seems safe, um, and we would use, uh, an artificial turf, um, green. That is, uh, size-wise, is a full regulation size green, maybe a little bit larger, it's about eleven, twelve thousand square feet, to give you an idea. So it is a full size, and we could put in several cups in that and, and hit from various places, so you could actually go play a little game there. The turf area, that's about, uh, a hundred by two hundred feet, so, large enough to have some grass without, um, grassing the entire park and all the water issues and the environmental issues that go with it, but still a park with some grass, so people have a place to go, they can go into the trees, you could have some informal games out there, but not enough space that, um, your local AYSO club is going to show up for six, six PM soccer practice and start having issues with the neighbors next door, and that, again, is a comment from the neighbors that when we originally, way, way back, looked at this project as perhaps a place for soccer games, um, perhaps the little ones could go out there, but it's, but it's too small, but big enough that you could throw a football or a frisbee and, and have some, some green space, um, and some shade, an area for parking, and because the trail, the CV link itself, if it gets done, would be right by there, we had, uh, some comments, I think it was one of you, and, and some of the neighbors, and I think staff also, of putting in a restroom building, um, so there is some kind of a pit stop, we'll call it, um, in the area, again, an amenity for the park. And then, um, lastly, the dog park, again, this was comments, uh, from at least one of the council members, from a few people in the community, and just go out there and walk around and watch all the people walking their dogs, I mean, that's happening right now in the neighborhood, it just is a, a part of life in this part of Palm Springs, as well as a lot of other parts, and so, um, I went and looked at the dog park at Ascena, just to start talking about, you know, relative to size and how this works, and we had some comments from the council, and I may be one of you also. I'm gonna walk behind Kathy and, and use my voice a little stronger now and talk about how this dog-
Eric, you can take that microphone with you, it just comes out of the-
Perfect. So, if you're familiar with the dog park at Ascena, the dog park at Ascena is about three hundred and fifty feet long, and it's mostly about sixty feet wide. There's one area where it pops out, and it's around eighty feet wide, but most of it is, so it works out about twenty-five thousand square feet fenced in, it's mostly grass. So the idea of this area is that it's the same basic design as what's at Ascena, with the, the ring around it, grass in the middle, except we added a shade structure here, so you could wait or get out of the shade, we think that that's something that would need to go in fairly fast. But what makes this different than what's at Ascena is Ascena is just that dog park, that sixty by three hundred and fifty feet area. That park here is this little piece right there, between that cul-de-sac and the trail is this piece. This is the top of the levee, that darker gray stripe right there. From the levee to those homes to their side yard is about a hundred and twenty feet, and from there to there is fourteen hundred feet. So this is about four acres of a strip going down, and my thought on this was, here's the simple area where you could stop and park and use the restroom and drop your dog off and let your dog run around in a fenced area, but there's no reason, because these will be fenced along the side, there's no reason that dogs couldn't run along this whole strip in there without running amok out in the wash and rattlesnakes and all the other problems. So, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking. This is really not counted in the acreage of the park or counted anywhere else, but it's HOA-maintained, and it's open space, and it's not going to be heavily landscaped. Yes, Lisa?
Is the right time for questions?
Absolutely.
But have you thought about fencing that area?
Um, we will have it fenced, obviously, on the side yards here. We won't have it fenced, or we weren't planning on having fenced at the end of the green belts, so that people could come in and out, and I'm not sure we can fence it going up and over onto the maintenance road of the levee.
Probably can't?
Probably can't.
Probably, okay.
So, a leased, a leased area to walk your dog, or a well-maintained dog, or a well-behaved dog.
Will that be under the HOA's control to make decisions as to whether that's lease or no lease?
Leash or no leash?
Yeah.
Um, not if the city decides otherwise, that could always, the city approves the CCNRs of the HOA. You could specify how that works.
Let's try to keep questions organized towards the end unless there-
Yeah, I think that's kind of the end of my presentation, so people have questions of me.
People that have questions for the applicant, starting with Commissioner Donenfeld. You know, it's interesting, we look at these parks and we never think about kids because we don't see a lot of kids in Palm Springs, but increasingly, I think we are seeing more families living in Palm Springs.
Yes.
Could you give any thought to building some amenities here for children, like swings and jungle gyms or things that kids like?
Um, I, that's one of those things that I kind of deliberately excluded, just looking at the demographic and saying, is that realistic to have that kind of equipment in a place like this?
You know, grandparents have children that come visit them-
Understood.
Because when you look at it, it really looks like it's an, it's an older person's park. You've got, you know, golf is an older person's sport.
Yes.
And I'm not so sure that golf today has quite the attraction that it used to, and it looks, seems like you're using an awful lot of the space for what might not be used very well at all. You can't really play a game there, you can pitch and putt, that's about all you can do.
Right.
And it's a, it's a lot of, a lot of turf being taken up or ground taken up for that purpose. So I would think that a better mix of use might be appropriate. Uh, the other question I had is, have you given any thought, I know these are not well-traveled streets, but you've got a break between the tennis area and the main park, and then you've got another road framing the, the west side of that park area, any thought to crosswalks or any sorts of safety measures there, because there will be cars going back and forth and people will be crossing?
We, we haven't really got to that level of detail of how a crosswalk might work there, I think that could be very appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Ishbain?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Donenfeld, for stealing my thunder, but just to pick up on the point about kids, this project was originally presented to the Planning Commission in part as providing, uh, somewhat affordable housing for families, and I think the conspicuous absence of, um, amenities or recreational opportunities for our younger citizens is, is a mistake, and, and I would want to see, uh, something specifically geared to that demographic, particularly given that this was, I don't want to say sold to us, this was presented to us as an alternate for housing for people that didn't, families that didn't want to be in a more higher density area. Um, that, okay, so that, that was my main, gonna be my main comment. Flynn, I know we have a Parks and Recreation Commission, do we have, is there a staff, head of parks?
There's a director of the department, yes.
So, I, I would recommend that, given that you have two commissioners now commenting on the lack of facilities for our younger folks, maybe coordinating with that staff member rather than the Parks and Recreation Commission, um, that, that didn't want to have any part of this, but now that it's a, a given, we are going to have this park, let the staff help you out in determining what is missing in that part of the community that you could provide as far as amenities go. That was my main comment, and then just again, to pick up on Commissioner Donenfeld, I, I could see, um, a lot of traffic calming devices in the roadway in this area and in the intersections right within here, be they like cobblestones that kind of slow you down, or, I hate speed bumps, but something that, um, does bring down the speed in that specific, because you're entering the community, let's look at, pause to look at the trees as we kind of bump along the road there. Um, I think it would add to the charm of your entrance as well. Have you looked at tipu trees? Those grow really big and tall and shady, and you have the area for them.
Um, I have, we considered a number of trees, the problem here with the wind zone is if you have too much of a sail, they'll tip over, so we have to be real cognizant of that when we look at trees. So we want a, we want a, a loose leaf form and not something that gets super tall.
And what about the oak? That doesn't get that tall?
It doesn't get that tall, and it has a very fine leaf, but it gives, has enough to give shade, but not enough of a sail to tip over.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at, and I liked your comment about this, the traffic calming, I think that's a good idea.
Mr. Doug?
Uh, thank you. A couple of questions, um, is there going to be lighting for the tennis court?
No.
No, no lighting?
Yeah, we're in an area in Palm Springs under the dark skies and especially next to the wash where lighting is strongly discouraged.
Good, I'm glad to hear that, because I've had a lot of issues with adjacent neighbors in the past.
Right.
Um, I'd like to pick up maybe on a, a few of the comments that have already been made. Um, I guess another question, um, is the width of the, let's just call it the CV link placeholder, is that the width that's being specced for the rest of the CV link, do you know?
I do know, and it is not. Um, we specifically had this discussion with the city council, I believe it's in the conditions, Flynn, and the, the trails as the, the link outside of the, outside of the link coming into the project along the levee, because this is the, the real, you know, in the plan CV link. This one is supposed to be, I think, twenty-five feet wide and accommodates the electric vehicles. And we ask, and I think that, and the council agreed, and I, we brought it up to you, that this width in here be sixteen feet on the alternate and not allow the electric vehicles, and the electric vehicles would be routed onto the public road.
Eric, let me just correct you, I do have the condition of approval here, it's actually fourteen feet is the width of the trail through Serena Park, and the condition does specifically state that electric vehicles are to be on the roadway, so that's the condition as approved by city council.
Okay, so I mis, misremembered that, but it was smaller.
Okay, thank you for that.
Can I, can I just speak to the CV link? Because I've just been going through CV link intensively in Ascena, the width of it in the Cathedral City section coming into Palm Springs is actually fourteen feet.
Really?
Uh, it's, they're doing a two-foot reduction to not put the CV link into some of the wash area, and they are allowing electric vehicles, so for the fourteen feet, uh, I'm not sure what the city, our city engineers would allow here, but in other areas along the levee, it's going as narrow as fourteen feet, and sorry to interrupt.
Okay, that's good input. I, I might make a recommendation, though, in the, uh, western portion of the, let's just call it the CV link, as it passes through the site, you've got a row of trees on either side. I would recommend actually spacing the trees to allow potentially a wider, um, pathway, so in the future, if changes are needed to be made or whatever, I would just hate to see, you know, a row of trees be planted and grow up and then hinder possibly some flexibility for that CV link. So that's just a, a recommendation. The other thing I'd like to recommend, um, obviously, is a, um, enhanced crossing for that CV link trail across the street, and perhaps, um, a little bit of alteration for the tree placement there. Um, I just think that visibility, obviously, for that, um, crossing of the, the street is going to be so important in terms of visibility, and, um, the trees are beautiful, I'd love to see more shade there, but maybe, um, a little bit more openness, um, at that crossing might be safer and, and more effective. The rest of these are going to be comments, basically, and this is, um, a study session, so I like the, the informality of the format. I tend to agree that, um, I think that golf, there may be certainly golfers in the valley, but I think it is, from my reading at least, demographically a sport or an activity that's sort of being, sort of on the way out, and I share the concern that too much of this is being earmarked for, um, golfing practice, if you will. So I'd, I'd like to maybe see that either reduced in size, um, or perhaps go away completely. I like the area of the turf, um, especially with some, some shaded areas of that turf area, because I think even, you know, we've discussed, uh, a children's play area, I think, you know, adjacencies would be great to have some play equipment adjacent to that turf area. But having said that, I think having that turf area adjacent to one of the roadways is probably not the best placement, I can see a kid, you know, playing ball or playing frisbee and, and running out into the street. So I think based on the size of the site, I think there might be a better location on, for the turf area. I was sitting here before the meeting, sort of jotting down some potential other uses, um, especially, you know, the sort of southern portion, the dog leg, um, of the eastern portion of the site, I think could be utilized in perhaps a, an interesting way. I think a lot of us remember our former mayor wanted to have a, a demonstration garden at City Hall, um, sort of a sustainability demonstration garden, and I think this might be perhaps a, a good location, um, for that sort of demonstration garden, looking at indigenous plants and so forth. Maybe make it, make it do double duty perhaps as, um, some sort of walkway or a park horse or, um, some sort of strolling area, um, sort of a prescribed, you know, loop perhaps through a demonstration garden might be quite nice. Um, just looking at my notes here, yeah, I just, I think my basic comment is I, I would like to maybe flip the importance and not have golf be the predominant use of this site, and personally, I would like to see, maybe not more of the turf area, but certainly relocation of the turf area, and the inclusion of some sort of, um, active play structures, which I think can be sort of artistically done. So those are my comments.
Kathy, or Kathy?
Mark, Lisa, if you wanted to?
Yeah, mine's going to be fairly quick, uh, although I second, uh, the comments regarding golf, I think that it's just taking up too much space, uh, on this. Looking at the tennis courts, I think they're very attractive. What I am finding, uh, here locally is, uh, vast numbers of people are giving up tennis for pickleball, and have you, uh, looked at the possibility of putting in pickleball courts? Because they take up a little less space, uh, and with the demog, demographic that I think you're going after of an older group, it, it is extremely popular here in Palm Springs.
Hadn't looked at it.
Uh, I would encourage, and, and I can- I would encourage, and I can actually put you in touch with
I bet you can.
People who have made their living, it seems, advocating for that. What I would tell you is our experience at De Mothe Park is that they have had to remove tennis courts and recon, or essentially reconvert them to use as pickleball courts. And I believe it's two out of approximately eight, nine that were converted. I would like to see that looked at. And again, I will second all of the comments regarding, I don't think we have to remove golf, but a little less of it.
Randy?
Yeah, I totally support the pickleball issue. I own a condo and a complex in Palm Springs, and they converted the tennis courts to pickleball, and the tennis courts were just never used. Now pickleball courts are used on a regular basis, so. And I also support that, I think it's an attractive feature for you in terms of selling the houses too, if there is a children's play area. And it widens your market significantly in terms of people that might be interested in the houses. So I support that. Thank you.
A whole range of comments on different things, and this is great, since Flynn's probably not found what I sent him.
No, I do have it. Do you want me to go ahead and read?
Yeah, I think so, because it is a pretty wide neighborhood comment, I believe Nora Williams is the head of a new One Palm Springs neighborhood.
Whitewater.
Uh, whitewater, I'm not sure it's, I don't think it's called Whitewater, but she's, she sent notes out to everybody to ask about the park.
Right. And we're part of that neighborhood.
Let me go ahead and read this into the record. It says, "Overall response to the park has been promising. Rather than being disturbed that there are only two tennis courts, people seem pleased that there are any. Saves me going to Ruth Hardy Park," said one neighbor. "The dog park is small, and the map makes it look as though moving it to the turf area would make for a bigger, more useful dog park. But the developers' concern there is that no one wants to live right by or be able to hear too loudly the dog park. We understand that. We wish it was bigger, but it would probably negatively impact the price of nearby condos if it were any closer to them. While I doubt many of the residents in Alexandra Estates will make much use of the putting green, we do recognize that for the other phases of the Palm Springs Country Club, it's a nice gift for them to have anything golfable, since they bought their condos believing that they would have a full golf course. Overall, there were a few folk who indicated they weren't happy and were planning to be at your meeting on Wednesday. The overwhelming number of people with whom I spoke, however, had minimal concerns about the park, and were just glad that it would be included in the plans. Best, Nora Williams."
So maybe following that with comments, and if I stand up, I think just walkability, if this path extended here so that you can, you can do a loop because, thank you. One thought is to extend the path around so that you can loop it, whether it's gravel or some way of walking it. People tend to prefer to walk in a circle as opposed to walk just in a line. And the dog park, and because I'm in the dog park every day with a new puppy at Ascena, and I'm also on the HOA board, I get all the complaints about the dog park. One of the things we've found is that you probably didn't need the additional width, but you, you might need, you might look at putting a small park here for small dogs, some way to separate the dogs, because you're going to have a lot. We only have 300 homes right now, and we already have a clash between big and small dogs. And it's not a clash between the people, but the dogs clash. So some separation off, you want enough room to throw a ball, and the big dogs run further, but the small ones run pretty far, but some separating. So if possibly some of this area could be used, I think that would be really helpful. We found you need a water fountain, a water source, a double gate, and I don't know if you're looking at that, so that the dogs don't get overexcited on the way in and out, and you don't have incidents with dogs biting other dogs. Those have all been important things. Lots of benches and little containers for dog refus. Shade. But those are, those are the things that we've found. The run's a great idea, but there are coyotes in the, in the wash, so that, I'm not sure people are going to let their dogs off. Some people may be brave enough to let their dogs off-leash, but it's, people will be cautious that they won't lose their pup. So in terms of other, other items, I like the idea of the tennis courts. I think some child's play area would be useful. We've been, we don't have any game amenities in Ascena, it's a big community, and people have been asking for bocce courts, for pickleball courts. Is there any land we can develop for anything else? Because people, as they get to be friendly, want to go out and play some kind of a game and not go too far away. And so we've gotten requests for all of those, and not always the fanciest kind. A bocce court, if you could just make it usable, people would do it. You don't have to make it state of the art. So those are the comments. I like the idea of the children's play area. If not here, you've got another green area that's closer to the trailer park, and that may be a place where there are children. But I think because, because this is going to be, the thing that's going to get used the most is the dog park, because there isn't one, and people are going to come who live in that entire area and use it. It will be, it will be the draw that brings people in. And then I'm sure people in that other area also have children, not just in your development. So some kind of play area, I think, would be great. And, oh, the other thing is less palm trees, more shade trees. Because the palms, unless you can make them shady, you basically want people to walk along the walkways.
I have a few comments, if you're done. First, I want to really endorse your first suggestion of a trail along the east side of the park. That was one of my first comments, then I was looking at this. That could also be used to establish an edge condition between the park and the land used to the east. If you created sort of maybe a three-foot strip between the trail and the edge of the park, that could be more intensely landscaped and create a nice defining edge to the park. And then besides creating the loop that people could, could use. Perhaps, I have some sympathy for the golf course and the people, it was taken away here, but I'm not sure that we need the, I guess we've got practice tees from four different cardinal points, and I don't know if we need all four, particularly the one to the south, takes up a lot of the parkland. And maybe if that one were eliminated, some of these other uses we've been talking about could be, could be accommodated by shifting things around a little bit. I share the concern that Doug has about the CV link intersection, that's going to be, need to be looked at carefully by both the park planners and our Public Works Department, because there are standards for, for uncontrolled trail crossings, which can be quite hazardous if there's a lot of volume. So we need to take a look at that. With, and with that, I think most of, I would endorse most of the comments that have been, other people have made, and we'll try to have, maybe Flynn can come up with a consensus of our thoughts.
I was afraid you were going to ask that.
I have another question, if you're done. I am really confused about the CV link. You know, we read and hear so much about it. Certain communities are opting in, certain communities are opting out. This is the alternative route for the CV link. When are we going to know with finality what the project will be? When will it be finalized?
I don't think you would know until the finally IR was certified and they pick a preferred route.
So where are we in the process?
We're still a ways from that, Mr. Donenfeld.
We're, the first leg of it's being built right now
In Cathedral City?
In Cathedral City behind Ascena, being built by Cathedral City under a grant, but with CV link assisting. And so we're seeing that, that we probably haven't had the city do hearings or show people potential routes, yet I'm hoping they're going to do that, because it would have helped us if that had happened earlier.
I guess my question is, if, let's see, let's assume that this route is eventually agreed to, will the city then have to do a taking with respect to private property for, or not the city, it'll be the authority running the CV link? Will there be taking, or is there already a right-of-way that's been established through this property for this purpose?
No, there isn't a right-of-way that's been established through this property. This is being shown as an alternate route only. If this were to become a permanent route, the city would need to have discussions with either the developer, depending on the point in time, or the HOA relative to that.
But you would have a trail here no matter what.
Your protection, if I could interrupt, your protection from the long-term public open use of it would be something other than a right-of-way, but it would give you equal protection in a couple of different ways. Number one, we have CCNRs for the community that would specify the use and the open to the public and what it is and how it's maintained. The city is a party to those CCNRs, and we can't really change them without the city looking at them. That's number one. And number two, the development agreement, this is part of that, which is a contract with the city.
So you've laid the groundwork for sitting down and discussing this if and when they decide the route is here as opposed to along the levee.
Exactly. Yeah, so it's permanent and it's under the control of the city.
I understand, thank you.
I think we've, in the past, or we've suggested in the past, I don't know if we've actually done it, and if we've done in other communities, is establish a non-exclusive easement over the route that allows, would allow the city, allow any member of the public to use that route going in. And that, that would accomplish a lot of what CV link needs to do.
But keep in mind that today we are just looking at the park amenities, and the trail has already been approved in terms of its route.
I have another comment, sorry. That pickleball discussion went through our HOA as well, we have a couple of tennis courts. And somebody said, well, we could just restripe the existing tennis courts, and then they could either play tennis or pickleball. Is that an option?
I'm, I'm not an expert at this. The pickleball netting is a lower height than tennis, and the size of the court is smaller.
Right.
So it, it's always conceivable that you can make the reductions to accommodate pickleball.
Well, I was just thinking, if you had a
It's more efficient.
If you had a tennis court size, then you could either play tennis or pickleball if it was striped duly.
It's conceivable. I've actually played one game on a court that was striped in that fashion, and there's a little bit of confusion, but for those who knew what they were doing, they were less confused than I was.
And the other comment I had was, I've seen this in more urban settings, I guess, where you could also provide, I think, can you also, no, maybe that's not right. I was wondering if, if it would be possible to provide a basketball hoop, given that you have all this concrete anyway? Just a question, I guess. Thank you.
I, I don't think basketball should be included unless a nice hockey rink is developed. I'm joking.
I have another question. With, with respect to, what is the, the ground cover going to be like around, well, the entire area where the golf amenity is located? Is that going to be DG? Is it, what do you plan on?
The intention was that it would be desert, zeriscate landscaping. So it would be planted and drip irrigated, but not turf.
So you'd, in some cases, you'd have just plain earth, where you didn't have plantings?
Yes, yeah, there would be, but not, you know, not areas as big as this table. There would be plantings like you'd see as you walk through the desert, but I think in a, more a landscape architectural manner, so there would be decorative plants.
But for the golfers around the green, where the tee boxes are, that would all be grass?
That would be, no, everything is either, the green itself would be artificial turf, and then around it would be either low shrubs, low drought tolerant grasses, not mown grasses, and/or DG.
How safe is the golf here for somebody who's walking? And I'm, I'm just asking
Good question, good question.
I have seen, I live adjacent to a golf course, and I've seen some really bad shots.
Yes. Okay, and, and I am a golf course designer, actually. And so the standard rule is that from the tee box, you would go just from the middle of where the person's teeing off, you would put a semicircle behind you and to the sides of 50 feet, once you get to the sides. And then you would go out to where your shot's going to land, and you would go out 150 feet from that center line. So you would draw, you have that semicircle behind you at 50 feet, and then you would just basically take a tangent off that circle and go out to a point that's 150 degrees perpendicular from where your shot's going to land, if that makes sense.
So
That's the safety zone.
So this has been designed with a safety zone, so the balls are not
Correct. Hitting cars and kids
They're not going to hit cars, they're not going to hit somebody walking.
Unless the guy takes a driver out and tries to hit it 300 yards, but
No drivers allowed.
Right.
Eric, is this pitch and putt, or is this an actual tee box where somebody's going to be using mid irons and long irons?
This is pitch and putt.
Okay.
Yes, this is, you know, nine iron, nine iron and steeper.
So you're going to have rules here that
There would be, yes.
They're going to be posted?
There would be a sign with posted rules, and yes, no driving, no.
Just as a note, I'm sympathetic to the golf, because I heard the testimony from people and heard people concerned about it. I just agree that maybe we could have a little, either push it back and have a little more green space for other uses, or have one less place.
Okay.
I don't think we need four.
Could, could I make a suggestion, kind of, in our best interest, but hopefully in yours too, and maybe steal a little bit of Flynn's thunder, which he'd probably give me? Could I try to make an attempt at synthesizing what I heard from all of you and walk up to that plan and say, if we did this, this, and this, do we have kind of consensus on a direction to go so I can produce a new plan?
Sounds great.
Because there are a lot of good, a lot of good ideas, and, and I think we might be able to adapt this. I am, I'll start with the golf, since we, there was a lot of comment about that. I am a little bit loathe to just take it all the way out, based on the comment that you just made, Kathy, from all the comments I've got from the neighbors. I think that the idea of limiting the space that it takes is a good one. I tried to focus it on this, to use the space, is what I did. But if we got rid of these two tees, and we have one or two or even two close to each other, and focus it up into this corner, hitting this way, that would take off over half the area that it's taking up and would still have the golf. Kathy's idea of putting a small dog park and a large one, as a former dog owner, I think that's a great idea. It's easy to do. And if that helps, great, I'm all for it. The idea of making the site distances work here at this trail intersection is a good one, and we should do it. Simple. The idea of traffic calming and crosswalks and pebbled surfaces and that type of thing to add to this to make it work is a great idea, and I think we should. It gives us character, gives the community character, and as long as, it is a public street, so we need Marcus and staff to sign off on it, and I'll certainly promote that, and I would add it to the plan. Play areas. Just a story, for whatever reason, I was working on one of our projects up in Bakersfield with a landscape architect up at north of the River Park and Rec District in Bakersfield, and brought up this project and talked about this park design. And she brought up a book with a structure that maybe I'd like to throw out as an idea. Wish I could remember where I've seen them physically, but I have the catalog, I could probably get it to Flynn. But I believe very firmly, based on our research, that this is going to prim, primarily But I believe very firmly, based on our research, that this is going to primarily be, no matter what we do, the market's going to be people that are older than 40 primarily that live here. And I don't expect a lot of kids. I don't expect them to be here. I think it's going to be primarily adults. I hear you relative to, okay, we are providing a more affordable product and there are likely to be families because it's a good place for them to be able to get into. There are play structures that are fun for adults as well as kids. Maybe we put in something that works for both.
That's great.
Yes. These ones, I, I'll try to describe them. They're, they're like a rope climb and they look almost like a, like a pyramid, like a volcanic type thing. And you climb up to the top and you use your hands and you get a view and you get up and then the desert, that's nice because you can see up to the mountains, you can see the community. And look at something like that that provides some maybe agility type. And kids will be all over that anyway, but as opposed to slides and swing sets.
The only thought I have is we're not only devising this park for purposes of the development, but this is going to be a public park. So the community also will, will use it.
Right.
And I think Michael mentioned this. We don't want to get in the weeds of our bureaucracy in City Hall, but it seems to me that if we're going to make this a public resource, not just for the owners of the development, but for the community, we might want to sit down with at least the director of parks to see what some of the park needs are from perspective of this community and add some of those things to it. Not just to suit the owners, but to, to meet the needs of the community, which none of us really know much about right now.
Okay. I, I think it's a good thing. I mean, we did, I, I really feel like we did, we've done a lot of talking with the community.
For example, you just described the structure that adults and children can use. It sounds like it's an interesting one, but I'm not a park and rec expert to know whether that's community sensitive or not. I just, I just think it would be good to check with an expert on some of these things.
Right. Okay. Makes sense. But that's an idea to try to, you know, throw something out there. I don't know what to say about pickleball. Honestly, I hear you loud and clear. I'll look into it. And that's something that probably appropriate to talk to your park and rec director about, say, you know, what's the, what's the consensus? And the comment about having the loop, I think, is a very good one. It's probably intended here, we just didn't get to that level of detail, especially if it's DG along the side. And I was struggling on how to deal. I put the word natural landscape with shrubs in here, but the idea of doing a demonstration garden, I think, is a really good one. And that's something that I think could be incorporated within this area. There are all of six houses on this cul-de-sac and I know it is a street and it's open, but I'm not sure that that's necessarily that big of a safety hazard as opposed to a collector street or a loop street or something with kids in here. So I, my personal take is I think that's probably a good place for turf, but maybe there's some, an additional place if we put a structure of something. We could put a low fence, that, that's easy enough. Put a tube steel fence across here to make it even safer. I think that's a good idea. Some of the detailed stuff you had on the dog park is good.
Do a little bit of green, if I may.
Sure.
If you're not, if you're going to get rid of these, bring a little bit of green down here. And then you can use some of the other, some of the other uses.
Right. Yes.
Flynn, this is a little bit off topic. Has AAC seen this?
No, this wouldn't be going to AAC until it comes in for the final plan development.
You know, unfortunately, we're losing our two landscape architects on the AAC. And I was wondering if there's some informal way we can get this in front of them for their comments.
In terms of the landscaping, we don't need to finalize that today. We're primarily looking at the amenities, the activities that are offered in the park area. The final landscape will come back to us at the final plan development stage.
And that will go to AAC?
Correct.
The only other is more shade trees.
Oh, yeah. More shade trees is, that's fine. That's understood.
I think with that, are we, I think Flynn, you can take, work with the applicant here, Eric, and, and come up with a list and then can we kind of review it maybe at the next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. I've got, based on what Mr. Taylor has just discussed, I've got a list of 10 proposed amendments to this plan. And if you want, I can just run through these very quickly.
Okay.
One is to limit the space of the golf and he talked about eliminating two of the tees. Number two is to add a small dog park so that you separate large and small dogs. Number three is to increase the site distance at the trail intersection. Number four is to provide traffic calming, changes of surface and crosswalks adjacent to the entrance here and where the trail crosses. Number five is to add a play area for smaller children and what was discussed is potentially agility type play structures as opposed to necessarily swing sets or slides. In addition, it was discussed to perhaps offer pickleball as an alternative or an option to the tennis courts. Number seven is relative to providing a loop trail on the east side of the park in the dog leg area, as we're coming to call it. Number eight is to provide a demonstration garden that would also potentially be in the dog leg area. Number nine is to consider providing a low fence around the open turf area for safety considerations. And then number 10 is to provide more shade trees as part of the overall park plan. Does that encapsulate the recommendations?
Did you get the path?
The loop path, yes.
Yeah. At this point in time, I don't want to eliminate the, looking at more kind of younger children amenities. I, I know this rope structure sounds intriguing, but I don't think you, we have agreement in the commission here that that's the way to go. I, I think, you know, in consultation with the head of the Parks Department, you know, maybe there, we do need something more toddler oriented. So I don't want to throw that out at this point.
Can we make it assess the need for additional?
Yes, I can do that.
No. Let's add a little, let's say include...
Amenities for younger children.
Amenities for younger children with the possibility that it could be combined. But I don't think we want to assess. I think we want to include some facilities for children.
I, I think, you know, making a multipurpose thing makes a lot of sense to me. I, I think that any HOA, if they're maintaining this, would be hesitant to take on the liability of true play structures, just based on what I've heard in the past, it could be a nightmare. So I think the idea of making something a little bit more multipurpose is probably a good one.
The architect is thinking like a lawyer.
You have to, don't you?
Okay. Unless there's any further discussion, I've got the list of recommendations from the planning commission, so I'll go ahead and forward those on to the city council.
We have to talk timing too, don't we?
Oh, yes. That's a good thing. Thank you. In terms of timing, what would you recommend in terms of the park development? Maybe, Mr. Taylor, if I could have you come forward. We have a phasing plan that we discussed as part of the preliminary plan development approvals.
Right.
The development is going to go forward in four phases. And so keep that in mind that this is a four-phase development. Maybe just go through the phases in terms of where they occur on the site plan.
Well, the, the simple park is, the simple part is the park is in phase one. So that gets built up front. And the, the units that are immediately east of the park, both along the back of the Verona houses and up along the wash, there's 50 along the wash and 29 homes along that length of Verona up to the Whitewater condos entrance is phase one. And then it basically phases from east to west.
Well, it should be, the park should be developed with the...
With the first phase.
With the first phase. Yeah, right up front.
If we make, since that's agreeable to you, I think making that as a recommendation.
Okay. Yeah. It's already on the adopted phasing plan. That's part of the conditions already.
All right. Okay. With that, I think that concludes the item. I don't think we have anything else on the agenda.
No, we do not.
What's the plan for, for time is it? Are we on our own for...
Yes. We would need to adjourn this meeting to your 1:30 regularly scheduled planning commission meeting and then we have lunch provided for you in the room next door.
Okay. Did we have lunch? That was the important question. All right. The, the meeting adjourned until 1:30. It's a regular meeting.
Okay. Great.